No, she's not able to.
I mounted and posted our norms.
Yeah, which is wonderful. So we've got one minute and then we can begin. And the door is unlocked.
Oh, yeah.
And we just hit seven o'clock, so we are good to go. Good Charlie? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so we are um called to order at seven o'clock. It's Tuesday the twenty first of July. Um, we are being recorded for Groveland TV. There are no public presence at this time. Um, I'm going to just start with some unfinished business before we go through the rest of the agenda. I just wanna kinda go through a couple things um from our last meeting that I just want to close up. The first is, you know, this is sort of my first month in this new role, so I wanted to sort of make sure that our board is completely transparent to everybody around. Um, you know, so I'm hearing things that people can't find our agenda when they're posting, things like that. So I'm gonna make sure that when I post it at town hall, I will also post it on the library Facebook page, just so it's there. We don't need to put it on um the library
Library what?
Website. Website. I was just but just
On the website.
Yeah, you probably.
No, I was gonna not gonna put it, 'cause I can't post it onto the website, but I don't
Oh.
I think i- it's already on the town, but it takes so long for it to get put on the website that people can't find it.
Mm-hmm.
So at least if we get our meeting date up on Facebook, 'cause that's where a lot of people
Oh, Facebook.
Facebook.
On the library Facebook.
Facebook page, that's what you were saying, yes.
Now Amy has told me nothing, well I have an email from him saying nothing can go on that Facebook page because of the E D A and E D A issue.
'Cause of what?
I uh I have the the email you sent me when I asked her Diana's
Yeah, I was just, we usually what we do with Facebook is
ride. That girl on the night before you sent an email.
Yeah, like, 'cause we have so many events going on, so we're always posting for events. So I usually post the night before
Right.
or whatever. So if we posted, you had asked me to post Diana's party,
Mm-hmm. Yes.
but we had already had it posted all over and I was waiting for the day before.
No, it wasn't posted.
It was it was at town hall, it was here on the door.
But it was on the
Um
The web page.
I see. It was on the way, it was on the front page and the web page. It was, yeah.
It was really all over the place, yeah. And we put posters around town too. So it was, and it was out front on the sandwich board. I mean, it really was posted and so
Yes.
That's so bad to read that. Oh, the sandwich board, I'm thinking of red.
Yeah. So I just wanna make sure that, you know
So
Can I just, so should we be getting something on the library page?
We should definitely be on the calendar, make sure we're on the library calendar, both online and on paper.
Okay.
No. It's not on the calendar.
And um
So can I make a suggestion? Is that we have a lot of different means of communication. And one of the problems is that it really takes a lot of time to like post all these places and make posters and take the posters, et cetera, et cetera. So we need to decide like where is the go-to place for whatever. So maybe it really should be, I mean, I'm not allowed to post minutes on the library webpage until they've been posted on the town page.
Control.
Right, right.
But we could post um the agendas.
We post the agendas the day of the meeting or the day before the meeting, but I wanna get the date out there so people know when we're meeting.
Right.
But isn't that sorry, isn't that the responsibility of the town to make sure that it's on the town website?
Well, we can on the library page.
Yeah, it is.
What the meeting and agenda is, what the meetings are and what the agendas are for all town.
Yeah.
It is, but what we're hearing is that people are not finding them. So I just wanna ma- I just wanna, I'm just trying to be transparent to let people know when our meetings are.
But
I think it definitely should be on the calendar that we post your part.
And they Yes, exactly, yes. Should be on our online calendar and on our paper calendar, right.
Yeah.
And then, you know, just the night before, even if I don't post the agenda, just post the date. We're meeting tomorrow at seven o'clock if anyone wants to join us. There's there's no reason why we can't put it there. Um, you know, I'm not gonna put it on the crier, I'm not gonna put it anywhere else. I'm putting it on our page.
Well, it's on, it's on the library webpage where the, on the trustees page.
Only.
But it was wrong on the calendar.
Oh, no.
It was for tomorrow because Diana was doing the calendar before and and it was always on Wednesdays, right? And so she had it programmed in there, but didn't get changed. But it is, it was on the, if you go to the website, it was on the trustees page of the website.
But I don't think people dig that far.
They probably don't. And it should be on the calendar. I totally agree.
I think it needs to just Needs to be on the calendar and just, so I just wanna make
Because, I mean, looking, I'm looking at the town website now. The last agenda was six twenty-two and the last minutes were eight o'clock.
Exactly. So
Hmm. There's about four ways to get to it. And the way I don't, well, I guess you can find it.
I'm looking at Where I would do it would be going through Langley Adams Library Committee agendas, Langley Adams Library Committee minutes.
I can.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Well, you can, even if you could get there, like a million different ways, it still should be there. And there is some problem at
That's how most people Correct.
the town hall that we are giving the minutes to there, but
Right.
once it goes there, it's getting
So I just, you know
Whatever. It's out of our control of that. I don't know.
Until we can guarantee that it's up there and and people can find it, let's, you know, let's just be transparent about it and get it up there. So if people wanna join us, then they can
Oh, I I I get.
Absolutely.
Join us. Um
Mm-hmm.
So
So the Facebook page you feel?
I I just think the library Facebook page. I'm not gonna go anywhere else because as we all agreed, we're not gonna comment on the town crier.
Right.
No.
Because we can't comment as an individual. When you're commenting there, you're commenting for the board. And we can't speak for the board as a trustee.
As a trustee.
Right.
So on, and again, if people want to know about us, they can come to our meetings. We we are open. We're not hiding anything. So I I think we we have to have open communication, but it has to happen in a meeting.
Absolutely.
Yes. And not outside of our scheduled meeting, so
I know.
That's for commenting or, you know, committee, yeah.
Exactly. So I just, it it's
I don't know what people are looking for.
It's not a gag order. I mean, I've seen people say that it's a, it's not a gag order. Someone saying that by
That it's a law.
saying that we don't post anywhere is that it's a gag order against everybody on our committee. And I don't think anybody is seeing it that way. It's that we cannot represent the board
Right. in a public forum.
in a public forum.
We do it in public, yeah. Individually.
Individually.
That's right.
Yeah, it's it's posted by law. It goes to the town clerk. From there, it goes to the police station, 'cause it has to be in a place that's open twenty-four hours.
Absolutely.
And it goes to a place in Savoryville. It's, that's what it says it's supposed to be, in a place in Savoryville. So it's, and it's at town hall.
But I was talking about just when people make comments on any kind of a social site, that we don't respond because we can't
Social media. We've all agreed not to.
You're not gonna debate with anybody, are you?
Right. Exactly.
Because then we're representing the board, which we only, we don't have the right to do, except if we're in, because then we're breaking open meeting law, is that
Mm-hmm.
we need to be responding in our meeting.
I don't know, it brings up a meeting law. I just think it
Hmm. It starts a discussion outside of a meeting.
Well, I think it's the point, exactly. People gonna debate things, right?
Yeah.
So
But we discuss it here and people are welcome to come here and
Sure, sure.
Well, that leads us to an issue. I wanted to discuss something. Was told we can't discuss it in executive session. And I'm certainly not going to discuss it in public.
Like, oh, um
It it
It depends on what the issue
But that's gonna drop right there, but
Exactly. It depends on what the issue is. I mean, it's something that we can you can present to the board if you feel that it's an issue. And then, once we know what the issue is, if we feel that we need to go into executive session, then we can make sure that it falls under Mass General. That was actually my next comments here.
No. No, you need to just say that we are not allowed to to, so we're not allowed to give names to anybody unless the person is in this room and we go to discuss anything.
No.
I did notify.
Right.
It's, we are not allowed to discuss names unless the person has been given notice, you know, just so.
Of course. But but that did definitely end the discussion.
Well, what, can you give us an idea of, 'cause I'm not
This Well, it's gone to the selectmen and the selectmen will deal with it this week.
Okay. But if we don't know what it is, then
Well, if I can't talk about it, then you can't know.
How, when can we call
Denise, what can we do in the trustees' session?
Sorry.
When is it appropriate to call for an executive session?
So
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we can go into executive session. I actually have little handouts for everybody today.
Oh, thank you.
Um, so this is sort of part of my again transparency. So I just, these are all from the trustee handbook. You can take one out and pass it around.
The M V or M B?
M M B L C trustee handbook that everybody has.
M B.
Better to use in the board.
Um, there's enough copies for everybody here. I can go that way. But the very last page of this is Anne Marie, if you wanna keep two ones to hand in, you can. It's fine, there's enough. But the very last page tells us when we can go into executive session.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, so, you know, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than the professional competence of an individual without restricting the individual's right to be present, have counsel present or speak on his or her behalf if requested. Um, contest, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation for non-union personnel, conduct collective bargaining sessions, um, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. I'm just doing top line here. Uh, discussion of deployment of security personnel or devices, investigation of charges of criminal misconduct, consideration of purchase lease, value of your listing.
Where are you? I'm listening here.
I'm a very narrow last page.
Right, right.
That's right, okay.
That's right, okay. Yeah. So, so to discuss, and I'm sorry, I need to, to discuss
That's right.
Uh, just, okay, she's finished. To interview applicants for employment, to meet and confer with a mediator to respect the litigation and um, let it just
And then it's just sort of a self full open meeting
that's it. We we can't go into, we've had a lot of requests to go into executive session to talk about personnel here in the library.
off or can't.
Because we do not oversee the personnel in the library. We cannot discuss that. Has nothing to do with us. That is Amy's job, Amy's job to handle.
Now And then Denise.
And then Denise.
Personnel issues, exactly.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Job descriptions do not go anywhere beyond the board. Job descriptions
Right, we're not talking about job descriptions. We're talking about
Well, I'm talking about a couple of different things I'm seeing here and
Right, we're talking about personnel issues right now. So if it's a, if it's a personnel issue, Ann, then it's not something we can discuss. But if it has something to do with the board, then it should be able
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. Yeah. What you said, a closed session?
So does somebody make a motion to go into a closed session, or how does that work?
Oh, yes, that's right. It has to be posted and roll call in and, right.
Yes, the whole process, you have to name, yes, and a law and a chapter and
And Exactly. Has to be posted about.
All
And because it's not per, um, personnel issues, you know, isn't there another thing about, um, on the first page, she's got the golden rules for board members and leave the actual management of the library to the library director. It's the library director's responsibility to select books and other library materials, employ the staff,
That's fine.
and supervise day-to-day operations.
That's not at all what this is for.
Okay.
Um, and I
So
So this is a conundrum.
Wait a minute, what, can can you give us without mentioning names? Um
That's kinda hard.
I don't have a word for the question.
Yeah.
A staff member's
The topic.
Yeah. Um It it it's, yeah, it's hard. I mean, I really don't want to overstep, but it really is something we should talk about.
But it, uh, so I feel that you should bring it to the board then. You know
To this board.
To this board.
And then we shut it down.
If it's something that we Right, if it's something we can't talk about, we shut it down. But if it's something, but I I feel that we we
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, but well, let me put it this way. And I I truly understand and appreciate what you're saying. Um, I listened to last, last month's meeting and you you put it very well. And I, something I applaud. But discussion of the reputa- reputation, character, rather than the professional competence of an individual without restricting that individual's right to be present, I think we cover.
So we can't, you
But so that has to go executive session then?
I think we could. This says, when they can call.
Well, it can, that's
And it's discussion of the reputation rather than the professional competence. It's not a question
But isn't of library staff?
It involves that, but it absolutely, we can leave that totally out of it.
Yeah.
Of, no names, no nothing. It does nothing, what I'm concerned about has nothing to do with library staff.
So it does leave us in a conundrum. I think it's something, if it's something you want to bring to the group and you're comfortable bringing it to the group, 'cause that's why we're here, and it has nothing to do with library staff, the running of the library, or
The running of the library
Well, the running of the library, you can talk
Falls under
Well, it doesn't, we, no, it does not. We have care, custody, and control of the library and its holdings. But what happens day-to-day does not have anything to do with us. We can't make changes to that.
The building.
The building.
Exactly. Correct. Right.
We can't direct that.
No one can make changes to that without a vote of the board of trustees.
No.
No.
Yes.
It's not controlled by the board of trustees.
It's not controlled by the board.
So it doesn't come to us.
Well, then I think we need to stop that discussion and go to the Mass Little Library Commissioners and the Attorney General, so
It's hard Well, we're we're going just by what's on here.
Right.
Right, but
Which came from the appeals.
And I have the whole, I have the whole handbook right here too, so we can look anything up
Yeah.
that is necessary. So I I'm gonna go back to Ann, 'cause I don't wanna walk away from Ann's conver- you know, Ann's, I'm gonna call it Ann's conundrum, because
So, yeah, absolutely.
It is a It it is a, it is a matter of reputation and character. And that's all I can say and then it's up to you.
Well, I guess I leave it up, I I leave it up to you. It's something that you want to talk to me about and then we can bring it to the board, or if you just want to bring it to the board now, we can add it to next, I mean,
It will come back, it's unfolding.
I think it should be, I I make a motion that we go into executive session and let Yan discuss that.
It's nothing we can We can't.
We cannot go into executive session unless we post it for twenty-four hours.
Alright, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So if you wanted to request an executive session
Then then I could go here and we will do it for the next time and we will have some more information, more exact information.
So, right, if you can just let me know, then I can
Yeah, okay.
put it forward in executive session.
Okay.
That has to be posted. We can't just automatically turn tonight into executive session.
Um Yes.
Yeah. Right. No, I don't ever want to not, yeah. But I I do think it's critical, so I, critical enough that I would say, yeah.
We have to post it.
Right. Yeah. Um
I mean, is it critical that we shouldn't wait a month? I don't
We don't have to wait a month. We can, we can do it in forty-eight hours.
We don't have to wait a month.
Twenty, thirty-nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, if it's something that
Yeah.
people can do, you know. But I think you and I have to talk so I know how to find which Mass General law it applies to.
Okay.
Um, and then we can go from there. Um
And and I've asked for help on that one too, so I should be up by the end of the week or whatever.
Right, 'cause like, I, 'cause I I thought, I I had asked if we could go into executive session to discuss some few things that were going on, you know, and I was told we cannot. And then I went back and looked and and reread and, you know, we can't because again, it's personnel issues. So, um, but let's talk and then we can come up with a date to to move this forward and not wait a month.
Okay.
And when are the select, you since mentioned the selectmen?
Um
One of the selectmen?
Um
Uh, you know, discussing that you said, or?
Yes, we should have an answer back this week.
So
Um, and so, okay, so we'll talk and then we'll figure out, find a date that we can all uh, meet again. So again, I just wanted to print these out. I thought these, the golden rules were just great for us to remember. Maybe should be posted next to our meeting norms. Because I think it's really important that, you know, this last year that we had has been very different from any other year that we've had in this library. And I don't have all the experience that many of you have on this board, but in the few years that I have been here, you know, last year seemed to be an anomaly of of such. Um, and I know we all, as I said at the last meeting, overstepped bounds, did things we weren't supposed to be doing, but all took on different roles to make sure the library stayed running. Um, Amy came on in March, you know, has turned some things around, gotten things straightened out for us. She's doing everything we've asked her to do. Um, and and getting the library running in in a way that it's open and and, you know.
I ask one thing. I think maybe at some point at a future meeting, we also need to discuss setting priorities. I, um, I'd like to get the director's report ahead of time. I've asked a couple of times to have that done. And I think that when board, the board asks for something, other things should be set aside and that should be a priority. So that might want to be on an agenda for a future meeting.
Yep.
But I, um, I'm sorry, I read what Amy said about this month and it looked to me like she put the priorities way ahead of what was really more important for the, for this particular meeting.
What, one of the
And the long-range plan had to go.
That something that should be a priority.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That that needs to be a priority.
But but in this particular, you know, absolutely, in general, it should be a priority. In this particular instance, the note that came along with it
Mm-hmm. Right.
from how I read it was that, uh, those other reports needed to be done.
Mm-hmm.
And they should be done. And I don't think we have to be right down the line. It has to be if something comes up and that's more needed. I don't, we have it now.
Right, but but we get it ahead of, we asked several times and I know that
Of course, yeah.
I asked several times.
We have
Uh, the credit card use was on last month's agenda. Did it get, that get carried over or?
No, we decided we we didn't need to talk about it because it was taken care of.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and let's see, I may just keep going down. I missed here, roles and responsibilities. Um, and I just wanted to just follow up the very last thing I have from last month's meeting, as we talked about our fiscal twenty fifteen budget and spending. Again, we were a year without a director. We all stepped in, had different roles. Laurie was doing payroll, I mean, doing vouchers. Um, we're all doing different things. The way that the budget was set up, it was set up as we all know as lump sums from here to there. There were no line items. You know, we had our own line items and, you know, it come to the end, we didn't know where we were, but Amy got it all straightened out, you know, with the help of, um,
Mm-hmm.
town hall. Um, so we're we're at July, we're at a clean budget. It has all been set up differently now. Everything has a line item to work out of.
Yeah.
Um, so I think this year is gonna be much different, much smoother. And then whenever we ask what we have, we're always gonna know. Um
Can I just take, I need to take responsibility to everybody on this board, because I was doing the vouchers and I was going through and trying to figure out what was spent. And we had, I believe, the the prior director and the interim director and everybody was working on the budgets and it was just chaos and I did not get it figured out myself.
Different ways.
So I could not come up with a figure of where we were at, which I should have done, but Amy came up with it. But it took that long because there were so many of us involved in so many parts of it. So
Well, that
I need to take responsibility for my lack of, I wanted to have that bottom-line figure and say, this is what we have, and I couldn't do that. And so
But this would be the town accounting task.
But now Amy, Amy did it.
And the accountant, I suppose.
Right, yeah. But even they, even they couldn't straighten it out. And so it was, it was different. So I just wanted to be
And
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We had people putting things in wrong categories and stuff. It was just very difficult and I didn't take responsibility for the role I played in that. And luckily, Amy and Jackie and they've got it all figured out.
Right. Yeah, so
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I spent several hours over the course of the last couple of months probably working with Jackie just to make sure everything was
Right.
Right. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, to know that, you know, we're not wasteful spending. We're not overspending, underspending, you know, we, there were just too many hands and we just couldn't
Well
It was the last minute, like, okay, this is due in half.
Exactly. Who's gonna take care of this? This is where we go. But we're at a clean slate now and I look forward to seeing, yes, Parla, seeing
Yeah. Right. For sure. No. I do
I have a question about the line items that you mentioned that we're now going to have. Can those li- are those line items gospel, or can they be shifted?
I think
'Cause that was the beauty of having a lump sum and then we could do our own
I think the budget for the town is different than what we work off of our own line items. It's all been, it's all been integrated, oh, yeah, for that, yeah.
No, they've all been, it, but it's, it's been integrated. So it looks like the way that we're used to seeing it. My feeling, but I don't know this a hundred percent, is as long as the bottom line,
Alright.
you know
We can't spend more than they give us.
Exactly.
But they did, you, when you propose a budget, which you guys did, you proposed a budget and you said, we want X amount of money for materials, X amount of money for technology,
Training.
Right.
Training, right. We really should make every effort
To stay within the line.
to stay within those.
Right.
Okay. It's always unforeseen, sir.
Um, there's always unforeseen and also then we'll learn from this year's budget and by looking back at last year's budget and we'll understand better, like what our spending in what areas really should be. Because at this point, we have a thousand dollars for technology and that's obviously not going to be enough, but
Right, maybe ten thousand dollars to, to do it.
Well, I mean, even just to maintain what we have, it would cost more than a thousand dollars. So, um,
Right. Right.
So at any rate, we'll learn from this and from the past budget. And then the next year coming up pretty quick, we'll have to create a new budget.
Very soon.
Yeah.
So, um, if there's any other unfinished business, we can talk about it now. I just, those are the things I just wanted to, I felt that needed to be wrapped up and 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 clear, um, before we move forward again. It's July, yeah, it's still July. It's July, we have to be clear. You know, we're starting brand-new July first and, you know, I really look forward to this, you know, this year of being able to
Yeah, July.
to know where we are at, at all times and
Do we have a copy of the budget? Do we, do we have a copy?
Um, I, we don't, right, yet, but we can have it for the next meeting.
Do you want to have that?
Right. Um
Yeah.
Thank you.
Get you a copy.
But we know where we all started with, what the lines that we all started with, 'cause that's what we all agreed with and we put it forward, so
Mm-hmm. So I'd like to make a request that we have a copy of the budget provided at the
Yep, I just wrote that down.
But I can read it out if you want. I have it right here.
Do you want me to?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, so for, um, uh, let me just make sure I get this right. So for, um, materials, uh, which is dictated by the M B L C, we need to spend a certain percentage of our overall budget. We have budgeted thirty-nine thousand sixty-one dollars.
Can I save you from reading it? Could not have a copy of that. It's hard to read if you're not looking at it. That would be pretty hard.
Yeah, sure. I don't know if the pink highlight will mess it up, but
Well
But we can, let's let's copy that at the end of the meeting for everybody and then we can review. We can review after. Um
Like this, that
Yeah, okay, right.
That's fine.
It's basically the same thing that you guys proposed to the town in the beginning. It's not any different.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, they, yeah.
Right.
Now, Denise made a couple
When I presented at the time before we were doing, we presented it around and then everybody approved it and we presented it to the town.
Yeah.
And it was
Yeah. And then Denise
It was what was approved.
So I'm saying you're, they put it more in said a lump sum, they categorized it more, it was more line items.
This way, exactly the way that we characterized it.
Yeah.
You guys
Oh, the same way. Oh, I thought you said, they said they, you said there was change.
They, yes, yes, yeah.
So it's just that
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just
It's just that if we have
Minor changes were made. Denise, uh, made some minor changes to it, because we no longer do postage. She or she's taking care of the postage. So like, I think eight hundred dollars came out of
Yeah. Right.
Right.
It's a lot, yeah.
utilities, utilities on there for eight hundred dollars. So that came out and a hundred and something dollars came out of postage or something else.
Mm-hmm, that would be a lot, yeah.
Uh, I'm just remembering off the top of my head. I can flip back through my notebook, but two, two tiny little lines came out and she put that elsewhere.
Yeah.
So there are no new line items?
No, no.
No.
Oh, I thought that's what you were saying, that there, that the new line items established.
No.
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 It's what we approved.
It's what we, it's what we use in what the town
When we use it with the
Yes, yeah, yeah. We voted on it last, right, one of the
Yeah, yes, yes. Right.
Okay.
But now the town is set up that way, which is great.
Oh, so they're all
So that everybody gets
Yeah, everybody's in the same
So all the departments match, basically. You have the same accounts in every department.
Exactly.
That's a, that's a
Yes.
Okay.
Um, alright. Does anybody else have unfinished business they'd like to discuss now before we go back to the top? And I don't have any cor- well, the only correspondence I have is with regard to treasures. So I'm gonna hold that till we get down to, um, down the line a little bit, just from the other libraries. Um, so I'm just gonna hold off on that for a minute, but Approval of minutes for May twenty-seventh. And Anne Marie sent those around to us. There you go. Thanks, I have them here. Any changes, questions? Um, adjustments. This is for May twenty-seventh.
I make a motion to accept the May twenty-seventh minutes.
All in favor?
Aye. Or you can't, 'cause you weren't there.
Who was not there? Parla was not there.
Today.
We're just, we're waiting for you, Laurel.
Well, Laurel wasn't there anyway, so she kept running.
I was gonna say, Elsie goes there and then
Laurel was there, okay, so, we're out, so, all in favor?
No.
Aye.
Tube staining.
Sorry.
Alright. Any opposed?
Put my down most
See, I found them there at the bottom of the pile. Alright, so then the next one was June twenty-second.
Alright. Twenty.
June twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty? I am twenty-second. Did I write it down wrong? June twentieth.
June twenty?
June twentieth.
Um, the only change that I have on this one is we had talked about an email going out to library staff. It was decided that it shouldn't come from me.
Mm-hmm.
And then I left it back into finance personnel director's hands, so I know that that email did not go out. So that's the only thing, if you wanna make a mention, that that did not go out.
Yeah. Okay, so just put, so just put email did not go out, or?
Um, uh, okay.
I guess was an email or letter, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did it, whatever it was.
But it didn't go. I just wanna make the point that it didn't go. Um And sh- let's change the date of the July meeting to the July first. Yeah, this was in the twenty-first.
Oh, I have the, that's on my, yeah, I sent it out a second morning ago.
Yeah, she, she did. You, you did send a second one. I printed it out.
Yeah. I was like
Uh, Wednesday on August twenty. May I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't second. I wasn't there.
Okay. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Any opposed? A lot of, tube stain. Any opposed?
And why am I saying?
Okay.
Okay, and I just need to go back and ask, 'cause I'm new with this
Like a clown car.
Okay, and I just need to go back and ask, because I'm new with this against the May twenty seventh, who approved and then who seconded?
I think I seconded.
I, I approved.
Lori approved, Kathy second?
Thank you, and I got the tube staining.
Okay, and then Carlos approved and Kathy second, okay?
Yeah, I got the second, and I realized it as I was like, it's like, oh, I need to.
Laurel tried, Laura tried.
Or we try, Laura, she really wants to be involved.
Can I have a question? I, I like that the fact that the dates are on here, are we gonna go back to our last Wednesday?
Yes, yes, it was just for the summer, sorry, I had conflicts in July and August.
Well, not that.
So to be clear, August is Thursday, the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventy seven. Twenty seven.
Very good.
August day, the twenty seventh. Um alright, moving down the list. Carlos, do you have treasurer's report or anything you'd like to discuss on your end?
I'll just talk about that for a little.
I don't have the report yet, this, I haven't had all the data discussed.
Yeah, we just, we just.
Stuff, but I did go through and we had discussed about um, which I did actually today, about the um how much money that was moved into the institutions of savings and how much should be taken out and put back and so from the.
One more? Oh, you got nothing else to say?
Um.
From the data that was provided by the previous treasurer, I was able to put together that this is the amounts that were pulled out of each of the funds.
Absolutely.
And then what percentage of that, of the seventy five thousand was that and then what the interest should be, should be that goes into those funds with the money to return.
Even if we don't have.
Wonderful, thank you.
But this, so this will be, we'll have to update this once we go to do it, because it'll tell us, the money will be a little different.
You can.
Some might feel a little bit different, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, it's simple math.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So once we have that, we, we just have to change the totals and then it'll update and then we'll talk, I think, I believe it's the, Denise to get that finished out and moved and closed up.
Yeah, move it. Yeah.
So just, just so I can just, just wanna be clear, that the amount deposited would go back into.
Each specific.
The am- well, the amount deposited will go back into each of the specific amounts, but then.
Right, but not the expendable amount, there's some that came out of the principal, right.
Whatever came out of the principal will go back to the principal and then the ex- and that I'll have, I should have for next month.
Absolutely. Perfect, you'll be done, Carlos, you'll be done.
What that should be.
And are we putting the interest earned back into the, but.
Into the spend, of course.
It'll go to the expenditure.
Into the expenditure, alright, right, right, okay.
Right, right. I mean, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we wanna leave, so how much money we started with will remain that number.
Strong suggestions, honest, yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna.
Yeah, we spend that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, this is wonderful, this is great.
Excellent.
Perfect, yeah.
Um, thank you, Carlos, and I did put that um, the question out on the list served that we asked two people.
Mm-hmm.
Um I did get a few responses back, um was how are, um let me just see if my question is on here.
What question?
Um basically, how are, how are other libraries handling their trust funds, are they, do they have a money manager or an investment um council person taking care of it? Um a few said that the town treasurer handles every, handles things, but then some did say that they hired um investment people, some have a Vanguard account. Um so I was just gonna give this to you, Carlos, and you can have a look at it and.
They must have larger councils that can afford to hire somebody.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and some said, there were some that they, one, and I asked for referrals too, so if you do hire someone, could you tell me who, who you hired and
Yeah.
you know, a little bit about them, so there's that information's in there, so I'll let Carlos digest that, but it was great, about five or six responses, not many responses, but.
A lot of financial investment people wouldn't take on that, that's not enough for them.
Right, because we don't have enough money.
It's not enough for them.
Exactly, yeah, but there could be somebody that handles little.
Right, but you wanna give out that percentage, but I mean it really should, it's easy enough, it's really an easy enough process.
Right. Exactly. Right, so I, I, I was asked to do it, so I, I put that on and got their um responses, so.
But. That's, that's a great thing.
Um. And it was like, we were talking earlier before we got here about just, I love looking at the responses from other libraries to see, you know, some are so teeny tiny and some are enormous and
Oh, sure.
Still.
so it's, it's nice to see one, but hopefully we're doing. Um any, any other questions on treasurer's report or anything Carlos gave us?
That, as I said, I'll have the report next, I need to also get on the state aid, the state aid and the uh donation account, just what those numbers are and where they are.
Great, okay.
Because I don't have those, okay.
I can tell, yeah.
So you can follow up with Amy and.
Yep.
They should come to us monthly in the budget reports if you question the director.
Yes. Yep. So that is great. Um so director's report, Amy just handed that out, did everyone have a chance to look at it?
No, I didn't get one.
Sorry, this is a copy, right here, I can't, if you can't reach me a little bit.
Oh, I've got one.
So while we take a minute to look at this, um.
I would expect more museum use this summer.
I was going to say, but you know, oh wait, no, this is June first.
The aquarium picked up. It's two months. Well, the aquarium picked up, but then it completely dropped off because they don't do it in the summer.
Because they don't take it this summer, so they don't take it, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. And so a lot of these are up for renewal and um usually um these sort of programs are funded by friends groups or from um gifts, so um
Right.
some point we need to decide which of these we need to continue to have.
You can, you can bring them to us as they come up for renewal.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can you give us a year to date use though, when you do?
Yes.
Because that's very helpful, yeah.
When you do come up to renew.
And they can be paid from the stadium or the donation as well.
Right, yes. Yeah, so far the, most of them have come out of both either state aid or donation, the only one was the MFA pass, which came out of the future friends, um.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Big sale.
Big sale, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we've got some press, which is nice.
Hey. Can I say the um deposit, the general fund, says from Jabberwocky Bookstore and Echolsmith Recycle, what was the amount from Ech- Echolsmith Recycle?
Sixteen dollars of um.
Sixteen million.
Yeah, yeah. It's the next paragraph or paragraph.
Oh, did I, I just went to press.
Yeah.
Alright, I just went to press.
So I have a question under staff.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Have these positions been posted before recommendations were made? Yeah, and how long were they posted?
Yes. They've been posted um I think I posted them last the Monday or maybe the Friday before.
Can I ask a question? I might have missed a meeting, I don't remember the board voting on changing job descriptions or staffing procedures.
We don't have to.
We don't.
Oh, you know, I think that's something else we need to check with the attorney general's office on, if a job description has changed, it needs to be brought before the board for approval.
Well, she's not changing the job description, she's changing the way positions are.
Right, oh, was that brought, brought before the board?
It's a, is that a staff issue?
Doesn't have to. It's a staff issue.
Denise and I have discussed it.
It just doesn't.
Well, Denise isn't a member of the board of trustees.
No, but she's the personnel director.
She's also the, right.
Right, she's the personnel director, but the board of trustees, when did that stop? Do you remember when that, do you remember when that stopped, Barbara? Can you remember the?
I was told that all personnel issues just go to Denise.
Yeah, well, there are things that are covered by the board of trustees, it comes to the board first, but I, wasn't.
Well, if you read the trustee thing that, that, that we have from the trustee manual.
Yeah. I, let's, I think, I think we need to get some advice from the Mass Water Library commissions.
Okay, and I will, I will email them tomorrow and follow them.
And I. And what happened to Diana's job? Is that posted? That was like the gem of the library, the adult services coordinator, is that job posted?
Not yet.
It's not.
No, we changed the job.
Who changed the job?
I changed the job.
Without talking to the board of trustees?
Yes, I discussed it with Denise.
Who's not, Denise isn't a member of the board of trustees.
Okay, I don't know, I, I'm just following my directions.
If the job description has changed, it has to be brought to the board.
I was told by Denise.
Well, I'll find that out, I don't think that that.
Well, I don't think, I don't think that's the case.
Well, the total, well, let's check if the Mass Water Library commission would be to the general.
Yep, I will, I'll do that tomorrow, I will do that tomorrow.
Okay, we're cutting, is this gonna be a full-time job also, uh adult services coordinator?
I will.
Again, but.
But it's not our, our.
Hold on, uh.
But it's not our responsibility, it's not our.
Wes, Wes. Well, wait a minute, wait, let me.
It, it's.
Let me, let, let me talk.
Yeah. Well, so I was instructed very clearly by Denise that any personnel issues, anything, can only be discussed with her. Not that the board of trustees doesn't want to have anything to do with it, but that's just what she told me and I'm just following her instructions.
Yeah, right.
So um as far as Diana's position, Diana um well, I've rearranged some of the responsive, we have a lot of overlap, so we have a lot of people doing all kind of the same thing and then sort of like not
Right.
and it just creates a lot of redundancy and inefficiencies. So what I'm trying to do is make people responsible for certain aspects of library services, which is pretty usual. Um and so most, so Diana, a great deal of her time was spent on circulation, but then we also had aides doing circulation and so there was a lot of miscommunication. Um so now I'm gonna have one communicate, one circulation person and then one uh part-time adult services person who just.
Part-time, so Diana's gonna be in place with a part-time person.
So focus is exactly.
So should we be saying the position as opposed to a person?
The position.
It's a position, it's a position.
It's not a position, it's gonna be cut to part-time.
N- well, uh the adult services position will be cut to part-time, yes.
And circulation become full-time.
Right.
This is just moving.
And in order to do that, we're not adding a position, but by your recommendation of Amanda would be.
I'm.
No.
How did we not get recommended? The jobs were posted for a week.
That, well, that was my question, that's why I.
It's been posted for almost two weeks, that's.
Um seven thirteen.
Well, I don't know, yeah, yeah, no, that's.
Seven thirteen, okay.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm reading it, and it's only circulation and library passes and, and loans.
That lacks transparency.
But that's why I'm ask, that's why I was asking, um.
What now?
Well, I'd be happy, well, I've actually shared all the resumes with Denise.
Um okay, so I just, I'm, wanna just be clear that, so adult services would go to part-time
That's the proposal.
and that would, right, and that would take the place of a page, I'm sorry, a library assistant position.
It'll be putting a person in charge of everything that has to do with the front end of the board.
Sure, I'm just making it clear that we're not adding a position, it would be a swap of a position, that's all I just want to make clear.
No, we're not adding a position. Right. It's just redefining what people's roles and responsibilities are.
Do you need to bring up some, I mean, that's what the library commission is, um.
I will contact them tomorrow, I have, I have three questions that we wrote down, um I'm just redefining roles.
I, I, I.
Because this is.
Um I'm trying to look at the number.
Her, her nomination would be brought before the town select board in July twenty seventh, why didn't we just handle the job instead of putting it out to put it out?
We did put it, I have seven, six resumes and letters.
Uh-huh.
And I have two people to, that I am going to interview tomorrow. So.
Tuesday, July twenty eighth, she will begin full-time appointment?
You're interviewing, uh the two you're interviewing tomorrow before the adult services position or for the circulation?
Uh, well, for the circulation and adult services, so I'm sort of, you know, trying to figure out what's what and who would fit the best.
Okay.
So when you go before the, before the selectmen on Monday, it may be Amanda or one of the other two that you're gonna meet.
Yeah, probably it won't go before the selectmen on Monday.
Now, who's.
Because I didn't really understand what the whole process was and Denise, just today, I asked her for like complete clarification on what are the steps
Mm-hmm.
because I was following her instructions, but then she wanted more information or a different timeline, et cetera, et cetera, so I kept adjusting, so finally today I asked her like what exactly is the procedure? And I got an answer.
And you said the salary, was that discussed with the board of trustees, the hourly rate?
Uh, that was discussed with Denise, again, I think that, that, I'm just following directions.
No.
Again, that's day to day of salaries.
And so, and adult services coordinator, because all we, book groups and all the outreach, Diana was key employee here.
I understand, but you know, we have to understand.
Well, I have a finishing question, I have a finishing question.
Okay.
Who would be in charge of outreach to the community and all the book groups and all the grant writing and all, who would be there at the center?
That required me to do that a couple of months ago.
So you're gonna be taking care of the grant writers?
Yes, yes.
And even though we don't have a long-range plan, we can wait until next spring to get the long-range plan.
Yes.
And Cindy Roach told you that you can still apply for grants even if we don't have a long-range.
I, I have an appointment with Cindy Roach on Friday and I will discuss this in more depth with her, because I've just now.
But she did tell you that as long as you contact her once in a while.
That's what, I have an email, yep, yep.
That we can apply for grants.
Yes.
And what does our annual action plan do?
I don't, I don't know anything about it, annual action plan, you guys have never discussed it with me.
It's part of the long-range plan, it has to, we have to update it every year.
Okay. We need to, yes, but. That was on the agenda or somebody mentioned it before and it's never been discussed in a trustee meeting, uh or with me.
So bring that up again.
Because it is a part of the long-range plan, which is should have been being worked on starting last year, but is now gonna get off the ground this year. And Cindy Roach said that we could, that she wouldn't even accept a long-range plan, I guess, at this point, so. Um and that we should take our time and do it right and she would expect it in the spring and I'm gonna follow up with her about it and.
Well, good, quite, quite, yeah.
Because they're all, they really wanna help us, you know, they're not trying to and they're being very.
Oh, yes, yes. Absolutely.
And they know what we've gone through, so.
Yeah, right. So I'm not really worried, if we do what they ask us to do in a timely way, we need to start doing that, which is why that preservation grant was due earlier than usual, because we need to prove to the MBLC that we can actually do what we say we're gonna do.
Okay. Mm-hmm, right, right.
I, I would hope that you clarified the date, because I had asked Cindy Roach about something a little bit, she's at a conference through Thursday,
The date of what?
so she can't get back, but she told me our long-range plan was due December first, was due, and I have an email from her that I can forward you.
Yeah, would you please?
But that is a due date, so perhaps you might wanna.
December first? No.
Yep.
Okay.
You might wanna clarify you.
I definitely want to.
That would, that would be the end of our action.
It'd be a good idea.
It might be the action plan, yeah.
So we would have a, yeah.
It'd be the action.
Yeah, so we don't get nailed somewhere.
Yes.
This is the first time I've heard the word annual action.
That's been part of.
Part of the long range.
A little, I guess.
Part of the long range.
Yeah, every year you have so many actions. Yeah.
What, what goals you met, you have actions every next week.
And what actions you bring.
So we had every.
Have we done that?
Yes, yeah.
Always, always. I think she's back from vacation, there's a little gap or something like that.
I think we're just on what's, she's, you know, what happens.
Your secretary said she was at a conference and she said she was at a conference.
I have it on my calendar from a month or so ago that I should contact her on Friday, but.
That makes sense if she's coming back Thursday.
Right.
Yeah.
Um okay, so if we could just go back to, so you posted the circulation position on the thirteenth, but adult services has not been posted yet, exactly?
Right.
Okay.
So how long, what was the closing day or, or it's just open until fill, is that what?
It's open until fill, yeah.
Yeah.
And priority was given to current staff, Brooklyn residents and.
I think you said Brooklyn residents.
And current staff, yeah.
Yeah, and current staff, because I remember we put that on the last ones that we had put on this one.
And they had that two years of experience, hasn't Anna worked this, for two years?
Not here she hasn't, but she's worked in libraries for like a pair of.
And she has a six or seven, and she has her master's of library science, which is great.
That's the fourth time the fire truck has gone by.
Yeah.
This page position, is that gonna be a new position?
No, it's uh replacing Oriana. She's, she's leaving for college.
Okay.
And Spencer has been here for several years and he's a really amazingly great kid.
Okay, and um so long range plan is complete, yay? Preservation, preservation and given to Gregor.
Trigg.
Gregor Triggus.
Triggus, yep.
Right, so we're going to get paid, so we can pay our bills?
Fine. Yeah.
Good, that last outstanding bill.
And we can really close the door on the classes.
Exactly, it's that last one that's been hanging.
Ooh. By the what?
The last fiscal year.
Last this year.
Oh.
With this last bill, as soon as it gets paid, it should be wonderful. So I appreciate your working on that and getting it done. It's great to just set a goal date to, to get that done by, so.
Yes. I mean, originally the date was.
August or so, I don't remember actually.
Right, but we wanted to hit it at the age.
October, it was October. Yeah.
Yeah.
But they said if you.
Yes, they gave us till October. They said if we got it in, they would come to check.
Well, the normal time is October. Um, but they, whatever. Again, it was, we had to sort of prove ourselves and.
Yes. So the next report that is due in August, um.
Is the ARIS.
The ARIS report.
And I went to a training about that.
Great.
Um, and I was working on that a little bit today, um, gathering all the statistics, et cetera, et cetera. And there are, I don't know, it's not just me, but there's a lot of talk about, um, interpreting like what some of the questions are and how the best, like what does it include, et cetera, et cetera. So that'll be a process that will probably take a few weeks to, uh, get higher now.
Well, mostly it's just pulling numbers that. Already exist. You've just gotta find the number of spots and just put them on that form, 'cause.
Right.
Yeah, that's the ARIS.
Yeah.
That's not a big, uh, item at all.
Well, part of it is a, there's a financial part of it, which is what I needed. I spent a lot of time reconstructing just exactly what we spent on materials last year 'cause it was not accounted for correctly.
Yeah.
Right, 'cause you, you gotta do it.
Yeah.
So that took, I don't know, numerous phone calls and emails to every vendor that we do business with, basically. So, but that's pretty, I feel pretty s-
And out of town.
I think that's a pretty solid number.
Yeah. And that number is a right percentage, the nineteen and a half.
Yes. Yes. That was what I was really concerned about.
Typically what happens in like May or June, as you get closer and you start to see where we are with the spending against the total budget, that's when we typically pay trust funds.
Yeah. Right.
To buy materials so that we come up with that number.
Right, well, so that's why I was concerned, but when I first came in, because the payment, et cetera, et cetera, the whole thing that was voted on at town hall, the exchange of funds. I stopped spending money 'cause I didn't wanna overspend our budget. I just had to find out like what we actually had, right?
Yeah.
And so once I found that after town meeting, I, then I went about tallying up or finalizing, tallying up the, um, amount we spent on materials and made sure it was the right.
Any questions on, other questions on the director's report?
Well, oh, yeah, they're going down.
I know, they're all, oh.
They're going to do here. I am too. They're going down the hills. They're like.
Distracted by them. Yeah.
And maybe they just went practice.
They're not coming into the library, so I think we're good.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it was some kind of an exercise.
Maybe they're gonna write this.
It must be, yes, they're all carrying stuff.
All right, okay.
All right. Um, it is distracting. I know, I was distracted by it too.
It's distracting.
It is.
Um, voucher list. Voucher list, there are two vouchers on the table, um, and then we'll see.
Mm-hmm. I think they've got.
Yes.
I didn't sign. Have a look at them.
Well, we should all sign it.
We've got files.
Here.
I might as well.
Well, we might as well just get able to sign it that haven't anyway.
Or did I?
Right, 'cause Kathy and I can't sign. Kathy can't sign neither.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's about a thing that just, did you sign a call?
Yeah.
But they, they're here, so let them.
Yeah.
Yep, let's get them signed.
Okay. There you go.
Lori, I don't think I did. Okay, we talked about staff on the director's report. Um,
Okay.
policy review, I put that back on here. Have we gotten any, we were getting the group together for.
Well, uh, yeah. We've emailed a few things and made some changes, but I don't know. I think it's just where it is now.
Right. Okay.
It's, they're still.
The process, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Um, we've been public to make comment. The last sort of non-agenda item that I have is the upcoming, um, director evaluation. I found, um, on, I think it was ALA, American Library Association's website, 'cause I couldn't find our past director evaluation.
I have that. I have a file.
Okay.
I think I have it on, on the.
And I looked and looked and looked too, but I found another one that I thought was really good and I made a copy for everybody here and, um, I'll show you that. Um, her, Amy's six months is just about up, which will be September sixteenth. Um, so we need to do her evaluation prior to that date, um.
Evaluation of.
Just her six-month evaluation. She's in probation until six months, so we just evaluate the six months of, of work and then
And officially.
after that, then she becomes, you know, fully, officially.
Officially.
So what's, what are we evaluating?
Performance is.
Performance, um.
Is public still, correct?
You have that.
Yes. I, I.
Right, right, but, but I mean, that's something that we, we have that she's been given?
Yeah.
What?
She has already given it yet. We're starting the process now.
No, we're starting. We have, we have an old.
No, 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 I mean, as far as, so typically when I evaluate a person, I tell them, this is what I'm evaluating you on, and next year.
Yeah, yes, so that's where we're starting.
Right.
Next year, I will eval, I will be, so that they know what, from the start, here's what you're being evaluated on.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, when Amy started, we gave her a list of priorities.
Mm-hmm.
That, um, we discussed and to put forward through, so I think that's what we will evaluate.
So that's what we're being evaluated, right.
Against is the, the priorities. That I forgot to print out and I will print out and send that to everybody, um.
Yes, I think this particular one where it's just the six month would be different than a year.
Than an annual, yes, yes.
Right, right.
Not as extensive.
I think it should go where she knew what this is, these are your, the expectations that you have to do between now and September.
So. Right. Um, so that's why I didn't go full, I, I kept looking for the other one. I couldn't find it, so I went and did research and found this one instead. So what I did was I made copies of this and that we can all look at. Mm, let's tweak it in a way that we think is best, but then we will have to meet, um, what, so my, my plan would be is I'll give, once we tweak this and agree on it, um, I'll then give everybody a final copy. Everybody does their own evaluation against the, the priority list that they think then we'll get back. I will collate it. We can talk about it and then I'll meet with Amy, um, with how we have come up with, you know.
Wouldn't the whole board need with Asia?
Nope, just the, the chair. Yep, the chair and the vice chair.
Just the chair? Mm-hmm.
Now, does Amy do the same evaluation?
I feel that a self-evaluation should be done. Um, I think it's good for.
Self-aval.
Yeah. I think we did that before.
We did, we did.
We did, I have a confirmation I agree, but the, I know, I agree.
I have a.
Right.
I agree.
Um.
Now, where does it say that it's just the chair and the vice chair that does that?
That's how we did it the last time, with the last director.
But does it say that? I mean, is it written anywhere that that's how it has to be done? Because I think it should be the whole board.
Well, I think we need to.
I really think it should be the whole board. I mean, the chair, the.
I think that's something we need to discuss. That's something we can vote on, but we can't vote on that now because it's not on the agenda.
But it's not on the agenda.
But, so we will have to call.
Well, I think we should look at what is the process.
And.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's written in the book.
Yes, so I need to.
And then, and then go from there.
Yeah.
If, if it says in the book, this is how you do it.
I couldn't find it in the trustee handbook.
There is, there is one. So I was just looking to see, answer your question. I couldn't find it, but there is.
Um.
There is.
Something here.
There is something, I think it's a bay in the back.
Evaluating chapter six personnel.
Yeah.
Like page fifty-nine-ish, give or take?
Evaluating the.
Seventy-four.
Yes.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, sixty-seven, okay.
I know, coming out with a new one, it is.
Some point, yeah.
They just keep addending.
Yeah.
Sixty-four, you said?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. Pillow, those paper, I'm running, I get them. There you go. Um, so while you, while Lori reads this, um, so what we'll have to do is this would be done in executive session when we go over the evaluation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then once we collect and collate everybody's responses, then the final evaluation is public, but, um, any discussion that we have can be done in executive session.
It's actually done at the board meeting?
Yes. But in executive session.
In executive session, right.
Yeah, it says the board and director jointly develops the factors, what develops a general evaluation.
Uh.
You might wanna consult with Denise about this too.
I have.
Although.
I have, I have an email from her right here, good, right here.
This is something I don't understand.
And it says. Yes, you can do the evaluation. It should be done before six months, um. It should be done with enough time that the board of selectmen could schedule an executive session if necessary, um, I think she meant board of trustees. Um, so she was recommending that we do this before or at our August meeting. Um, because by the time our September meeting comes along, it's, it's past, yeah.
It's past, right.
Yeah.
Um. So the individual evaluations are not public, only the consolidation would be. Um, or we can conduct a private review and then everything is public. So that was from the personnel director. I wanted to make sure that.
And the Maslow Library Commission is has, um, a little longer. Basically, I think it should be done by the entire board, we, yeah.
So, but I think we need to have a meeting first, that we go over everything, we do the evaluation, it's collated, and then we can present it to Amy as a board, is fine.
Do you have the ones to pass out that we can go with?
So this, yeah, so you can take these home.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this is, again, it was just a basic one, and again, I did not do this against the priorities and maybe I should do that before I pass this out. Um, but this is just basic, so you can take one and pass one, um.
According to this, it's done at the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Which is August.
But you have to, so it's one of the executive session, right?
Which is August.
Well, it would be September.
No.
No, it has to be done before her, her six month is up.
I mean, that can all. Oh, okay, well, yeah, okay.
So it's next month.
And it's open to the public, isn't it?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
But the discussion that
We can have, but we're gonna have another meeting before the next meeting.
we would have.
Right, that's what I, that's what we need to do.
We would do it too. Yeah, I think.
Okay.
If we feel that we don't need to, then we can just do, I, I, what I would like to do is have it collated before our next meeting. So if I hand this out, if we have another meeting that we say, okay, we vote, we finalize that this or another piece is the evaluation tool, then we say, you send them out, you get them back. I can collate all the answers, give it back to everybody with how.
Okay, so we're gonna take these home, fill them out, you're gonna get the priorities to us just by email.
Oh, get through the priorities, but I want everyone to look at this because again, I didn't line this up to the priorities, which.
Right. But just say that you, you, you email us the priorities, we take this home, we fill it out, and how do we get it back to you? What's gonna be our plan? 'Cause you're gonna need to collate.
Right, we need to just select a date that they come back to me, they're collated and then we discuss it at the August twenty-seventh meeting. We can either email them to me or we can leave them here in an envelope.
That's, that's how you're gonna get.
I don't need names on them or things like that, as long as your handwriting is clear. That's all I ask.
I was gonna say.
A lot of this is that.
Please, just circle the right answers.
Right.
Right, but there's, there's space for comments, so, you know, the ability to write comments on there.
Right.
Yeah. We've had one time on it so long, it's just basic, yeah.
Right, so, um, so have a look, let me think, let me, tell me if you think that this will, is something that can work. I have to get the priority list out again. It's on that Google Doc that we started, um.
Yeah. I'm scared. Catch you later.
Oh, okay. Um. And then we can do this at, um, our next meeting.
So we just set a date to get it back to you, so that you have time also to collate it.
Yeah. Yeah, I just need a day to do it, put it together, so I'm just looking at the.
Okay.
This actually says annuals.
I know, I was trying to change it up before.
No, no, I need. Oh, when I'm looking at this, I guess it's the same. I think we would like this, should be mutual agreement, staff evaluation, planning process. I also think it's different from annual because she came into a mess. Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Well, I, yeah, and it's only six months. You know.
And we're not evaluating her any years worth.
Right, exactly, that's right.
Right, just go.
That's right.
I'm just looking to see what is like the official, like, I mean, there's any, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we don't care what they say, 'cause this is what we're doing.
Okay, no, but I'm saying, we have been.
So we did.
There are a lot of the National Library Commission says that they don't.
Yeah.
But input into this too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I went all over the MBLC website. I went all over MLS website and they didn't have any forms on there, so I went to ALA, suggested forms and.
It's suggested. Yes. Yeah.
I think that's a little bit too long, that's.
At that route, um. Okay. Well, believe me, I've been coming very friendly with the MBLC website and, and people and.
It's a green one.
It is, it's helpful and, and MLS is helpful too.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, it's a.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Okay. Right, so tell us when you're gonna move it.
Yeah.
How long do people think they need?
I mean, this is only.
Yeah, I asked her that. We're also need July.
It's the, it's the twenty-first.
Shouldn't take us more than a couple of days.
Yeah.
Oh.
Unless somebody's just.
Well, say August first, uh, well, 'cause you said you'd give a chance to get us.
That's a good. That's even longer than you want.
Yeah, that's a long.
Some priorities.
That's, that's.
Well, she needs to get the priorities too.
What's a week? A week would be the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
So how about, how about the thirty-first? August first is a Saturday, so, which is fine.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, thirty-first, yeah.
So you can either scan and email them back to me or we can.
And.
Okay. I have to direct the old scanner.
That's okay, or just leave them here, just, or drop me an email saying, I left it at the library room for you in an envelope.
I'll, I'll put it in there. I'll take a walk now.
Okay.
You know where I live.
What if, what if you put an envelope at your house?
I don't.
I think I do, which I put in the wrong.
That people could drop it at their homes.
Okay.
Fine.
Are you writing on school, no?
It's fine.
No, she said Highland.
Highland.
Okay.
Um.
What's the name?
Yeah.
Well, let's not do it on camera.
I think I know which one's.
Hello, let's not do it on camera.
And what time is your house completely empty?
Why, it's. I can.
How do I leave it here? Everyone just leave it here.
We'll leave it here.
You're all welcome to come over.
Not just the entire town?
We'll meet in the teepee in the backyard. Just look for the teepee.
Only person I know on the road.
There's one in Moss Newbury too. Um, okay, so.
Can we get one to Beth?
Yeah, I'll get one to Beth. I can send this to Beth, it's fine. Um, so have a look, um, let me know what you think. I will get you the priorities
Oh, yeah. Right.
and if you feel that we need to make any adjustments to this, let me know about that and we'll meet before, if you feel that adjustments need to be made.
It's a lot, yeah.
Um, and then.
Well, see, it's kinda hard 'cause you don't have the goals.
I, I'll get them too.
Well.
I'll get them.
But she can email with us. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
No, I'm saying to say like, we could read it now. It's like, yes, that's great, but.
Yeah.
Yep, I, I can get them too. I just need to read.
Yeah.
All right, I'll go with that.
Well, you're right.
Where we go.
Um. So unless, after Anna and I speak, we come up with a date for, um, that we need to go into executive session, our next meeting will be Thursday, the twenty-seventh of August at seven P M.
Say that date again.
Here in the library. It'll be Thursday, the twenty-seventh of August at seven P M here in the library. Um, if.
Then, I'm sorry, are we doing this then?
We will do that then. So that was, this, the evaluation will be the priority on our agenda.
That's, that's what we're doing.
Then, um, I will put our other items on there. We talked about having a budget, um, we talked about having, um, action items, um, going forward. Um, I will go back to our, pardon, the treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report.
And I had asked in an email to please put, um, we held off the fire chief for a long time and I think
I'd put.
that training and disaster planning is extremely important for the.
Actually, I've spoken with the library.
Yeah, Amy's been.
Right.
But we need to have it on the trustee's agenda so that we know that it's something that needs to be scheduled and done.
We were talking about doing it sometime in August on a Tuesday. I think August
Yeah.
nineteenth or twenty-fourth or something.
Mm-hmm.
Two. So if that's already happened by the time we meet, you can just tell us if that has happened.
So what?
The date, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the director's report.
And like.
Um.
Some trustees may wanna come. Actually.
Evaluation due eighteenth.
That reminds me of a couple of issues he brought up.
Hmm.
Um, the AED, we, you know.
The figure of the other.
Yeah, where did we get that?
Trinity ambulance gave that to us.
Trinity ambulance? Yeah, yeah. Um, because we, somebody needs to like check it to make sure it works and the batteries are all over here.
Right. I checked that. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'm not sure it was Trinity ambulance that was evaluation. I could be wrong.
And I, um, he said that the town actually contracts with the people who provide the fire extinguishers and they check them every year annually, so that's taken care of.
Yes.
Um, and he and I discussed.
Which is not making sure everybody knows how to use them, but.
Right, we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do in August. We're gonna have a training.
Yeah. Yeah.
And he also discussed having a, um, well, for the preservation plan, we need to have, um, a comprehensive disaster plan, which is a major, um, thing.
Mm-hmm. Disaster plan.
Uh, and, um, Chief Lay and I talked about, uh, doing like a little diagram of the library with access and.
Mm-hmm. Like doing the cell rooms like that.
Yeah, like just like that, exactly like that, right.
Nothing.
Maybe true.
Yeah, natural. Yeah, and also having that chain of command so that we know like in case of an emergency, who gets called first, second, whatever, like that.
Well, that's great, that's great, yeah.
So have that all, yeah.
Would you email the trustees as to the date of that, so if anybody chooses to come?
Yeah, sure, definitely.
I think.
Um, and then I just wanna go back. So the questions you want me to ask MBLC about staffing, can staffing changes be made without talking to the board of trustees, changing from full-time to part-time? Can job descriptions. Can job descriptions be changed? Mm, I wrote it down right there. Without board of trustee approval and redefining roles and salary, does that sum up to what you asked?
I think that's that's a good start, yeah, I think that's a good start.
Okay. Um should we just look at our calendars now to choose another meeting date, either A for executive session, or B to follow up on this before the next selectance meeting, should your positions be going forward?
On the next selectance, when is Monday?
It's Monday.
It's Monday, yeah.
You're saying before then?
Well, I mean, if she's, if Amy's planning on.
Well, you know, this whole this whole process was really like just kind of not very well figured out, or I didn't really know what the process was, so.
Mm.
Um and then hi- you know, like after talking or really just emailing with Denise today, and her giving me the 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 brief outline of how it things are supposed to progress with timelines and things like that, because I didn't really, you know, like when I hired Darcy, for instance, it was a little different. Like the procedure was a little different, so I was basically going on that past experience.
Mm-hmm.
But for some reason, the procedure for this has changed, so.
I just think.
I don't have any problem holding off on it.
Yeah, I think.
Well, we shouldn't be interfering in hiring.
Well, one of the things was, I'm trying to fill a staff position so that we can serve the public and do what we're supposed to be doing.
I don't.
Right.
Right. Right.
Right, and the other side of that coin is, you have been here for such a short period of time, the whole scope of the importance of what Diana brought to this town and to this library.
The key reasonings.
Well, if Diana would give me permission to use her name, I'm sure, she was an integral part of this, and we should have really honored her tonight by saying how wonderful she was with this library. There wasn't one person I ever had heard say a bad word about her, and I've never seen a turnout for anybody as I saw last Thursday night.
No, I know, she was awesome.
Mm-hmm.
She could, you know what?
But you're doing it, you're doing it perfectly, because you wanted to bring it up at this meeting, and you you're doing a very good job of it.
Yes.
Don't don't want to be at any meeting.
Any meeting, does anybody have anything to add?
I miss her, believe me, she was amazing, and um you know, I don't know, I first, I tried to make things work, but there was,
Oh.
I don't know what it was, to tell you the truth, I don't really begin to.
But she did personal.
Personal.
Go in, you know, crazy, what a wonderful job she did.
Personnel, I can't talk about that.
I agree with that.
No, and she was wonderful, and I thanked her eight hundred thousand times for, you know, everything she did for us last year, and you know, we we couldn't have done it without her.
Yes, yeah.
As we all do.
Yeah. No.
Absolutely, no.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mm. Um.
So that's why I'm saying, that to me seems like such an important position in a town without a senior center or a teen center. She brought an awful lot to Nichols Village, she started a book group at River Pines, it didn't pan out very well, that one, but a lot of those people still came, is that a part of the myth?
Yeah.
A lot of those people still came to the one, the mystery and cup of tea, I guess they're having a morning, so.
Yeah, I'm planning on continuing all that stuff, she really has set up a great foundation.
She really did a wonderful job, and to cut that position to part-time, I don't know if we'll get the same type of um devotion.
And.
But I don't know that it's not a place to make that decision.
It's not our place to make that, yeah.
No, but I I certainly, as a citizen taxpayer in this town and a member of this board, I apply other rights to say that.
Yes, but well, it's just like with um the children's librarian, she does programming, and then she also does collection development, and she works at the search desk.
Of course.
Yes. Yeah. People have to multitask in the library, so I understand that.
Yeah, so um uh you know, there is a certain amount of staff time that is, and actually, it could be, well, there's a certain amount of staff time that's devoted to, you know, different parts of a person's job. And um I certainly don't, am not thinking about taking away any adult services, if anything, I'm thinking of increasing them and expanding and, you know.
What sort of be?
It's not a.
Um because actually Denise pointed out that there is another over fifty-five community in town that we haven't even. And you won't get anywhere with it, I live there.
Oh, really?
It's an active community, it's not a retirement community, there are people who still work. What? Oh, okay. Yeah, they, she said it was over fifty-five, so that is certainly not retired, not on this day and age anyway, so. We've tried to do all kinds of things on our own, and we get six or eight people to show up for things, so.
That's a beautiful. Well, maybe we can change it.
Don't even mind. I mean, we've had wine and cheese things, we've had Sat- Sunday, uh Saturday morning coffees, we've had Friday evening barbecue, so we've just, we've done all different things, and we get six, eight, sometimes ten people, that's it.
Okay.
They tried a book club for a while, didn't work.
Okay, well.
They play games on Tuesday afternoon at one o'clock, and they have like five people at show.
You never know.
In that being, when we had um an an adult program here, two women came up from Groveland Commons and asked if they could hold their annual meeting here at the library.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
And they said they hadn't talked to the the president, that they'd be maybe once or twice a year, they'd like to see it happen four times a year, that there'd be ten to twenty people, one hour at night. And I said, I'll certainly relay that information in terms of them holding their meeting here.
That's done the Groveland Commons and all this stuff.
Groveland Commons.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do they have an association or not?
They said they do, and that there's a president, and they were looking for a place to hold their annual meeting, and could they hold it here?
I think they must have a common association.
They must have a. Sure. Yeah.
And I said, as long as it's during um library hours.
That might be. One.
Mm-hmm. So we can now hand this envelope, this well-used envelope back to Amy.
Yeah.
And that's their info number.
And so then that brings me around to like, do we have an updated policy about these kinds of things, like who uses the library? I know that's one of the policies we did update in the in the policy.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think it is, actually.
Yeah, and I think just from the past.
But it would be good to review it, I mean, it would be different.
It was always if it didn't interfere with the program or a meeting, then.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And as long as they left buttons on the library.
Exactly. Exactly, it was during library hours.
Right.
Right.
The library, right, so that there'd be a library person, a home person here, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, on that note, can I just ask one question, are people allowed to do tutoring here for a committee? I think it would be great.
I want to do one?
Is tutoring here?
That's a public library, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and if they do, okay, 'cause I know back many years ago, someone was told that we're not allowed to.
Yes, how.
Don't live there, don't live there. And I see this now, and I'm like, okay, all right, it's a public library.
No, they have a perfect, right, it's a public library.
Okay, that's it, that's my question.
Yeah, we can't control really, you know, what people do unless it's illegal.
No, what would I do?
Right.
No, it is not.
And then we just call the police, so.
Mm, okay.
No, just, I'm just.
Um.
And they weren't even sure, they just were addressing their concerns.
Looking for a place.
Yeah.
'Cause I know we always look for a place too, but we're too big, we we've got the.
Don't you have a, you have a main hall?
Yeah, that would be. I mean, it doesn't hold two hundred people.
Oh, I see, okay.
And they're not talking anywhere near.
That's a big.
They're playing the poses now, I'm sorry.
No. They're doing training.
Um okay, so again, do we want to look back at a date, or do you want to wait for Ann and I to speak, and then I reach out to everybody, how would you like to proceed?
A date?
Well, why don't we pick a potential date?
Sure.
I think.
Give it like a week and a half.
I I need forty-eight hours minimum, so at this point, but.
Yeah. A week or something like that.
Um.
But you still need to get ahold of M B L C.
I need to get ahold of M B L C, I need to talk to Ann, so I mean, if we could look at. Not my date, please.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and I can be pretty flexible, I can change my workdays, it's just a giant pain in the, I can change the.
Talk about like next week.
Next week would be the.
Last week.
The second.
Next week, so we got the twenty-seventh.
I mean, February, is that a problem?
I can't remember, I'll have to remember, I'll have to tell the calendar, I don't know.
I don't use.
I don't use the calendar on my phone very often.
Are you late or are you early?
Sorry. I can't get it.
Bless you.
Do you want me to do your calendar?
Thank you.
Well, it's her.
It's not gonna matter.
It's her calendar, and she's having trouble.
My look is any calendar on the library. You need to accept Monday. Would you like a calendar?
No, no, I have things written, I don't have a calendar.
Um Tuesday is the twenty-eighth, oh, I can do that night, um Wednesday is the twenty-ninth.
So you can do Wednesdays?
Well, I can do that Wednesday, although although there is a program at.
Well, let's do that Wednesday.
Plus maybe later.
Um.
Thursday, a week from today.
Thursday the thirtieth, today's Tuesday, right?
May be going to Tuesday.
Oh, I should've made sure, then.
Okay. I think that's gonna make me up to, that's great, a week from today, Thursday, you know, I'm crazy, so.
Yeah, right, I'm sorry, that was just me, I had to do that, so that would be Thursday the thirtieth.
Well. I have different trustees on Thursday.
Well, I I might go to the ca- I would like, we can't go back to a Wednesday night that week?
If we do it either at.
I don't know.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty on Wednesday is the one.
And we're only gonna have possibly two things to talk about?
Seven thirty, Wednesday the twenty-ninth.
That's it.
Yes.
It's execu- it would be executive session, if, I mean, this is if, right?
Yeah, you have one, so it's not.
Wait, with open and it's like an extension.
Open session.
We have to open and, we have to open and open, and then go into executive, and then go out of there, and then close and open.
Open session, and then. And then go out of there.
But if that's all we're talking about.
What's the day?
That'll be the twenty-ninth, Wednesday at seven thirty.
Twenty, twenty. Can't be at seven o'clock?
She's got things to do.
Oh, oh, okay.
And it'd be an hour.
I wanna be on for Death in Paradise at nine.
If.
If you go into executive session, should it be someplace?
If you what?
Death in Paradise.
Where people want those with hearings.
On a child, uh.
Yes, couldn't be here, 'cause the library is open, so I'd have to find a spot, um so I'd have to look for.
Two age, child. Right.
Mm-hmm. We have a program here, is that what you said?
No, but the library is open.
So you want to. So you can't have executive session if other people can hear you, right?
Yeah. Right. Well, correct.
Well, we can, we've had it before, and we just closed the doors, yeah, we can, we have.
Just close the doors. Right. Those people in there, that's not.
There's a, there's a studio over at the police station.
There's a what?
There's a studio.
Yeah, there's a fire.
No, they're playing, uh did they light a fire?
Just.
There's smoke.
No.
I just thought. Black smoke.
Um, okay.
Um, I think can we have the rest of the sessions are closed, this stop, what? What?
I don't know.
We're easily distracted like itself this way.
Well, there are.
Or we're distracted.
I'm thinking.
All the lighting is like, you know.
Turn your back, turn your back. You know, you're also not looking though, isn't it?
Why do you think lines by?
Yeah.
Or listen.
Squirrel.
I know, I'm not looking, I'm going, dog in the, it shouldn't be during my meeting.
I'm. Um okay, so I will find a room, it'll be the twenty-ninth, I will let every know if this is happening.
So maybe, okay.
And if we can do it earlier than seven thirty, I will do it earlier than seven thirty, but if seven thirty works for everybody else right now, then I will.
Sounds good.
I'm listening. Just don't make it later, 'cause I'm, I'll be in bed.
Might be like the gentleman.
So if you look the, if we if look at the evaluation protocol, we may wanna meet once more just to review the what's being evaluated, so.
Exactly. Yeah, so we could do that at the same time, um.
We could, right.
We could just say that that's what we're gonna meet for, and if we need to.
Right, in open session, yeah.
Right, if if there need be, we may go into executive session for someday.
Yeah. Yeah. So have a look at that, I will send everybody the priority list, just make notes, then we can come back to it next week, I can update it, then I can send it back to you, and then you can have another week to turn it around.
Okay.
Um.
Thank you.
We'll do that, okay, anything else? Okay, um we are going to adjourn at eight twenty-two.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. Right, it's getting dark early, early with them, I don't know.
We can go stand by the fire now.
Now, everybody don't look at what's.
Night falls.
No one wanna.
You should have seen it this afternoon, they were both, they were using the big steamroller thing today, they're.